All right, good evening. It is 6 o'clock, Tuesday, June 18th. I welcome everybody to the North Brookfield Board of Selectmen meeting. If you'll all rise and salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. So, before we get into our agenda here, it's customary for us to read the dedications in the annual report that we publish every year with our town meeting. This year we have two. And the first one is Joe Hallway. Joe Hallway has lived in North Brookfield for the better part of his life and has been a fixture in the public safety departments of our town. Whether it was in the police department, fire department, or helping manage the North Brookfield Emergency Squad, Joe has always given his all for the safety and well-being of the residents of our community. In 1978, Joe was appointed as a part-time patrolman and in 1981 was appointed as a full-time officer. In 1979, he joined the latter company of the fire department and served under his father, Chief Manuel Hallway. In 1983, Joe briefly left the fire department. In 1984, Joe was appointed as a part-time officer again and in 1985 became full-time. In 1987, he attained the rank of sergeant on the police department and was appointed a foreman on the civil defense unit. In 1988, Joe joined the engine company and in 1991 achieved the rank of lieutenant and became a training officer. In 2003, he achieved the rank of captain. In 2007, saw Joe attain the rank of assistant chief. In 2010, he achieved the rank of deputy chief as well as being a diver and EMT. In 2017, Joe was appointed as chief of the fire department. In 2018, he was part of the committee to design and build a new fire station. Unfortunately, due to state age requirements, Joe retired from the fire department at the end of 2023. Joe has applied for and obtained numerous grants over the years and obtained many tools and various pieces of equipment that have saved the town of North Brookfield a lot of money and helped keep its citizens safe. Joe still is active consulting with the fire department and advising on the fire station upgrades. With this dedication, the people of North Brookfield want to recognize and thank you for your amazing service to our town. Thank you, Joe. So, the second dedication is to Lieutenant Colonel James J. Foyle. And you'll have to forgive me, there's a typo at the end.
I am demoted.
Mr. Foyle moved his family to North Brookfield in the 1970s. A dedicated Marine and family man, he decided to contribute his time and talents to the town of North Brookfield. An active member of St. Joseph's Church, he raised, along with his wife Helen, his family and his faith. In 2005, Mr. Foyle was elected to fill a vacancy on the Board of Selectmen and was re-elected in 2006. From his election and beyond, he served as ex officio on the Master Plan Committee, the Townhouse Building Committee, and the Downtown Development Committee. He remained on the Townhouse Building Committee until 2011. When John and Jemmy retired from directing the Memorial Day festivities in North Brookfield in 2012, Mr. Foyle stepped up and began directing them. In 2023, he retired from that service. He continues to support charities and organizations that reflect his faith and his belief in the inalienable right to life. We, the people of North Brookfield, thank Lieutenant Colonel James J. Foyle for his service and friendship. So, thank you, Mr. Foyle. Do you both have copies of this?
Yes, thank you. I have.
All right. That's how you knew you were demoted. And I do apologize for that.
Well, at least the good news is, none of this is posthumous.
That's true. That's true.
All right. So, we have no minutes to approve tonight. I'll entertain a motion to approve payroll warrant number 26 for $523,793.44. School warrant number 1089 for $188,666.58. General warrant number 1090 for $317,633.20. School windows debt 1091 for $29.28. Fire highway upgrade 1092 for $38,000. Wastewater Treatment Plant Upgrade 1093 for $2,307,312.22. And general warrant 1094 for $160.
So moved.
Second. Right. Any discussion?
No.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. So, we have a reserve fund request from the library. The request is hereby made for $2,000 to be transferred to the library heat account. The current balance is $50. It's going to be used for electrical expenses. The electricity is more than the budget allowed. So, I'll entertain a motion to approve that.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
No.
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. We have a request for $1,498.76 to be transferred to the Council on Aging Purchase of Services. The current balance is negative $1,357.28 and it's going to be used to pay for utilities which are more than anticipated and budgeted. Higher utility costs throughout the year. I'll entertain a motion to approve that.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion?
No.
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. And then we have a request for transfer of appropriations with restrictions. It's $3,448.20 from the Treasurer's Group Health Account to the Town Administrator's Salary to fund the first two weeks of the Town Administrator's Salary.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion?
Introduce him.
We will.
Okay, great.
Yeah. Sorry. All right. Any discussion?
No.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. So, I kind of dropped the ball on that one. So, we have Mike Slasic. Is that right?
He's right.
Mike Slasic. He is, we hired him last week. He started yesterday. He's the new Town Administrator. He has experience doing that, fulfilling that function. If you want to introduce yourself and just explain a little bit about yourself to everybody, that'd be great.
Good evening, and I want to thank the Board of Selectmen for the offer they extended to me and which I have accepted. I look very much to serving as your first Town Administrator. I've been a local government professional for over 20 years. I started my career as effectively the first Town Administrator in Ludlow. I've also served in the towns of Oxbridge and Athol and as the Town Administrator in Sterling. I also was the Assistant Director of Public Works in, well, it's really a city, but they call themselves a town of Enfield, Connecticut, which is a large community. So, I've been in various sized communities during my career. I'm still a Ludlow resident. I've lived there my whole life, except when I was going to law school. I'm a graduate of the Boston University School of Law and I also have an MBA from the Eisenberg School at UMass. I've got a family that lives in Ludlow and I'd like to bring them up here as often as possible. And we all look forward to meeting you.
Thank you. Yes, welcome.
Thank you so much. I'm clouting myself. I got carried away.
So, ARPA Discussion. Brooke, you want to take that?
Sure. At their meeting on June 12, 2024, the ARPA Committee voted to submit the following recommendations from the town's available ARPA funds. To rescind unspent remaining funds allocated to the sewer department for the purpose of main line scoping and to reallocate those funds approximately $40,000 to the sewer department for the purpose of replacing a failing Bigelow Street pump. Quotes for pump replacement and installation were reviewed by the committee and are available from the sewer superintendent.
All right. I'll entertain a motion to approve the ARPA recommendation.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
No.
All right. Did you have anything you wanted to say? How much money's left?
I'm not going to tell you.
Twenty bucks?
Twenty dollars.
Actually, I don't know what's up my head, but it's not a whole lot.
All right. All right. And it may seem to everybody like it's kind of silly that we went from the sewer department and back to the sewer department with the ARPA money. But when something's allocated from the ARPA funds, it has to be used for that allocation. So, if it's not and we need it for something else, it has to go back and be reallocated to the next thing because it's a procurement issue. So, you can't spend it on something it wasn't allocated for. So, all right. So, that being said, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Thank you, Ethan. All right. 12, 13. All right. Do you want to read the outreach report?
Sure. So, this is the director program and outreach report from the Senior Center dated June 10, 2024. Programming: We ended May with a great Memorial Day cookout. The lunch was very well attended, roughly 35 attended. Served hamburgers, hot dogs, as well as cake and ice cream for dessert. Our next lunch special will be our luau on Friday, August 23rd. I intend to invite both West Brookfield and Brookfield Senior Centers to join us. Our classes will be moved to Mondays beginning in June at the request of a few of the attendees. This will help balance out our days as far as activities. I would love to offer another exercise class since we only have Tai Chi and yoga at the moment. We are seeing an increase in the number of new visitors to the Senior Center each month. Bread distribution has had very high attendance in the past month, even though the amount of food that we receive has gone down, in particular, fresh fruit and veggies. For that reason, I'm looking into supplementing the program by using some of the funds from our food account to buy some of the fresh items at cost if possible. The Tower Hill trip will take place on June 21st. There is no, there is not cost for those who are going, just $10 per person to cover the trip for the driver. Transportation was covered by a donation and the total for entrance was $158.40. Finances: I'm working on end-of fiscal year budget items and we aren't in too bad of shape. The current balance in the grant account is $12,684.65. I do not want to use this account once fiscal year '25 begins unless absolutely necessary. I contacted acute heating and cooling to have the AC checked and cleaned. He will be sending the invoice for that. I tracked down the plumber who began the work on the sink and he will get back to me this week as he sent the estimate to Michelle. I will be requesting funds from the Finance Committee to help cover the cost of the sink repair since it is vital to our operations. I have asked the friends to purchase the TV since I have not heard from the individual who was going to donate one. It will be purchased at WICCO. They will install and remove the old one. I don't have time to figure out how to do it all myself. I have been looking into camera systems. The Blink system would require a subscription service every month, but I did find some systems that come with a hard drive and no monthly subscription. Both would have to be installed. I'm planning on purchasing a small safe instead of using lock boxes that are too portable. It will be located under the desk in my office. I did purchase a chair dolly this past month. It will be quite useful for our volunteers who have to move chairs around. Staff: The job descriptions are completed and ready to be reviewed by Council on Aging and the Select Board. I spoke with Joyce and she will be having surgery for another matter on the 14th. She will need to recover from that for another six to eight weeks. I will decide what to do if she is unable to return by September. The position for program and outreach remains open and we have yet to find a valuable candidate. Odds and ends: I attended the MCOA Spring Conference on May 16th. I was able to get a lot of great information and make some very useful connections, on of which was meeting Kelly Hitt, who is Director at the West Brookfield Senior Center. We will be doing so programming later in the near future. The next MCOA conference is three-day event on the Cape that I plan on attending. Judy and I met with Kelly Burke from MCOA in the 23rd of May so that it would make sure that we are operating correctly. She strongly recommended that we have a liaison from the Select Board as well as sending my monthly reports to them. This past week, I attended the Select Board meeting to request that someone be assigned to the center. They will discuss it at their next meeting. It was also requested that we consider changing our meeting times so that the appointed liaison can attend. Respectfully submitted, Courtney Rivera, Director.
I'll entertain a motion to accept the Director's Report for the Senior Center?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
I love hearing what's going on. That's great.
Yep, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Outreach Coordinator Appointment. Courtney, you're up.
Oh, I didn't know I had to speak. So, yes.
Do you have an appointment for us?
Yes, we do.
All right.
Wonderful. So, we met yesterday. The Council on Aging voted. There were four members present and they unanimously voted to appoint Darlene Foster as Program and Outreach Assistant. Darlene has been a key volunteer down at the center since Joyce has been out. She's really stepped up to help cover phones, to assist anybody who needs help, to help me in any way that I need help. So, I think she will be an excellent, excellent team player down at the center. I'm really excited to have her.
Wonderful.
Great. Did you want to introduce yourself?
I'm Darlene Foster.
All right. So, you've been helping out for a while?
I?
You've been helping out for a while?
Yes. Past couple of months, but I've been with, my family's lived in this town for over 50 years and I've been here for about 38.
I've known the family for a long time. All right. All right. I'll entertain a motion to appoint Darlene Foster to the COA Outreach Coordinator position.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
No.
Welcome aboard.
Welcome.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Welcome. All right. Contract for ambulance services.
Do we have a liaison for the Senior Center? Do we need to discuss that?
Are you volunteering?
Sure. Yes, I am.
So typically, typically a member of the Board of Selectmen is a liaison to the Council on Aging. It's more of an ex officio thing because you can't appoint yourself to, you know, be part of a committee. So, I'll entertain a motion to appoint Brooke as the ex officio liaison to the Council on Aging.
I don't know if I can.
So moved. All right. I'll second. Any discussion?
No.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'll get in touch with you about meetings and connect with you afterwards if you want.
All right. Contract for ambulance service. Joe, did you have anything you want to say about this?
The contract's the same as it's been. We have the $20,000 increase as a result of worrying about the holding funds drying up, so that keeps the agency stable. Our books and auditors is wide open anytime anyone wants to see it. We don't make a profit at all, but we maintain the money that we've gotten from you and the services. The guys are doing a great job. We've added a lot of new EMTs and the paramedics are still doing their contract work for them. So, I'm really proud of them all and will be glad to sign it if it needs some design at this point.
I'll entertain a motion to sign the contract for ambulance services.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion?
No.
No.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, guys.
You're welcome. Thank you. All right. Colonial Power Group.
That's the fun part.
You're back.
We're back again. So, yep, so.
You might have that in front of you somewhere.
Yes. So, we were here a couple of weeks ago. We talked about a time like the town got approved for its aggregation program for electricity.
Do you have any extras?
One.
One extra? Okay. Never mind, I was just gonna.
Yeah.
There's certainly passed or out of.
So, the town got approved for its aggregation program, electric aggregation program through the Department of Public Utilities after four years. And last time we were here, we talked about a timeline for launching the program and he said we'd come back with some indicative pricing for an October meter read start. Indicative meaning informational only, just so we could start the discussion and kind of talk about how best to move, to move forward. So, that's what we have here. A lot of numbers, I don't want to panic. We just wanted to kind of give you the full plate. I think we're going to focus in certain areas. So, what this is, is pricing that came in today from the four suppliers in Massachusetts, who currently been on Massachusetts aggregations. We've labeled them supplier 1, 2, 3, and 4 because pricing is sensitive, so we just didn't want, we took the supplier names off the form that we circulated. So, this is for the town's program. It's for an October start. Like I said, at the top, you're going to see in the first column the start term and then the end term and then the term length. So, I think we had talked about we would show you six months, 12 months, 18, 24, and 36 months for the terms. And then the four supplier pricing. The orange highlight is the low bidder for each term horizontal across, okay? And then in the top right corner, you currently, there's a bright yellow bar there. The national grid rates just got posted today at 3:30 before we came in. So, we also provided you with this chart for the national grid rates. It shows historical rates as well as projections for the future. I will say that the rate starting August 1st is going to be 16055. So, that's going to be, that first yellow box says it says TBD, August 1st, 24th to January 31st of '25. The next six-month period is going to be 16055.
So, that's good news for everyone in town because the rate's coming from 18213 down in August. So, the rate will come down by that for national grid where everyone's going to be at in August.
So, right, so these are just different tranches of products. And at one point when we were here, we talked about the DPU having you select certain products. We talked about having the lowest cost option, which meets the Massachusetts renewable energy requirement for the standard product that everyone gets automatically moved to in town. And that's this first, this first tranche at the top. This is equivalent to national grid basic service in terms of renewable energy content, right? And that's what the town selected to have for its standard product that everybody automatically gets moved to. And then this steps up in renewable energy content. You can add additional what are called renewable energy certificates to make it greener. And what we had talked about in the town's plan was offering two optional products that would have additional renewable energy content that folks could opt up to if they wanted to pay a little more and have a little greener option. So, I think what we're just going to focus on is the top tranche for right now, just to kind of talk about the pricing and what makes sense. I'm going to let Mark kind of go into the terms and what we'd be recommending in terms of what he's seeing against the national grid rate, but we're just going to start at this top part up here.
Okay.
So, I'm going to have you take a look at what would be the 24-month term. And I'm going to go all the way over to the fourth column, the fourth supplier. You see a rate of 13644. So, for us, when I'm taking a look at that, it's two things, right? You're going to be creating some stability of 24 months and it also starts off with savings right out of the, right off the bat. I do expect that savings to continue at this rate. It's going to be difficult for rates to come down. The only reason is we continue to green up the electricity and it's going to become more and more expensive, especially as we start to get deeper into the 2020s, 28, 29 that kind of timeframe. So, if you take a look at that rate in the 36-month, for the average consumer, I'm saying to you, that is legitimately the same rate. 13644 and then 13652. I kind of open it up to you where you want it. Again, this isn't actionable, but this one here, it's really the same rate. So, what you'd be talking about, the difference in those rates, I just want to make sure I get this right. So, it's about one hundredth of a cent. You're talking about, so if it was, it's about 60 cents difference per month on those two rates. Just to give you an idea of what you're talking about, excuse me, it's six cents, excuse me, it's a hundredth of a penny. It's about six cents per month difference on those two rates. That being said, those are kind of the two terms I'm looking at. And the reason I'm looking at it is if somebody wanted to be short in the marketplace, basic service is still there and they could certainly opt out of the program and so forth. But this gives you the 36 or the 24, gives you some stability and clearly savings out of the gate. You know, it looks like almost what, two and a half cents? And to put that in perspective, so that would be around, for a cent, each cent is worth about $6, right? So, that'd be $12 a month, you know, $15 a month, you know, if you're looking at it over the year. I'm just rounding up, around $150 a year savings. And it's the same product. Depending on, those are, those are the low terms. And I just wanted to show you, the other people are, you know, about a half a penny more across the board. Everyone's at 14.1, so this is a fairly aggressive bid by the fourth supplier. Just something to think about. This is not actionable and I'm going to tell you this week is not going to help you or me at all. It's not going to go up two cents, but I'm going to tell you that this is going to harm rates because we're going to strain the system come Thursday. There's just no way around that. So, then we, this is, this is where we get into some discussion about green and what the board might be thinking on green. And I'd like you to, this graph here is just what I want to show you from a historic standpoint. In the right-hand corner, there's a three and a five-year average. For me, and I just want to say this, that 33891 that you suffered through that last winter, it's two winters ago now, but that's skewing these numbers. But if you were going to say, okay, you know, I wanted to stay under the five-year average, you know, you can go to a 5%, you can also, you know, 10% is under for Mass Class 1s and even a 25%. I just don't know what you're thinking of, like, do you want to offer? If we go to the second page, there's some very lofty pricing there.
Yeah, you can go up to 100% green for any optional product. It's a little, you know, it's more expensive. We're in the what, 16 cents? 16, 17 cents?
Exactly.
I don't know, you know, the town of North Brookfield, if you just want some optional products that are a little bit greener than national grid, 5 or 10% more Mass Class 1 Rex to give folks some options, or do you really want to go kind of all out for the optional and put a, hey, this is the gold standard, 100% local green? You know, you can pay the 16 cents if you so choose. So, that's kind of the conversation on the two optional products. This is like just incremental to kind of show you what you could offer. You got to pick two optional products based on what the DPU has put in the aggregation plan. So, we just wanted to show you kind of a step up.
And the reason that we wanted to have that conversation, we can take away the other options. So, we look at this all day, it makes perfect sense to us and this is what we do. You're looking at it for the first time. So, we're thinking, this is why we go through this exercise. Okay, certainly we need to have that first tranche, right? So, you know, all of those tranches are good, you know, because we got to take a look at the curve when we stop actual pricing. And then depending on what you're thinking as a group, we would just have those two other tranches there and then discuss actual pricing on whatever day you chose. Chosen on October start, so you do have some time, right? Anytime.
Right. I think we said for a September start, you'd have to sign by the end of June. That was too tight, right? So, the October start, you need to sign something by the end of July. The letter would go out in the middle of August to everyone who's currently on national grid basic service, letting them know. on national grid basic service, letting them know that they'll be automatically switched in September if they don't opt out in the first 30 days. Certainly, they can move back and forth as the program goes on, but initially, you'd be enrolled if they didn't opt out. So we have some time. I think we wanted to just talk about, thinking about renewable options. What you were thinking, show you some pricing so you knew what the potential savings would be against national grid. And then think about, we also talked about, you know, a signatory, right, on pricing day, executable day. When we get actionable pricing, pricing comes in at 11:00 a.m. and we need a signature by 2:30 or 3:00 p.m. because it's a forward market and the winning supplier needs to set their hedge, right? So these are just things we wanted to talk about with the board. So we could start, we have some time. It's not, it's not a fire job. We just wanted to kind of start the conversation.
And I don't think any of those towns you mentioned have an active aggregation to administer. I'm thinking Ludlow has just filed, but Athol doesn't have one. And Sterling is a Muni, so that's different. So I don't know if you participated in this prior.
I did.
Yeah, not yet. Okay. But we certainly can walk you through all that. We just need a little direction.
We can have, I mean, if you want to, we wanted to do in front of the board, if you want to have a separate Zoom with any particular individuals, we can certainly have a further conversation. We just wanted to kind of generally inform and then figure out how you wanted to proceed from here next steps.
I have a couple of questions.
Absolutely.
Their way.
Is that okay?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay.
When you say actionable, this is not actionable, this is actionable. Does that, so tell me what actionable means. Does it mean the price can change by the time we get to signing or?
Right. So this was indicative only. So this came in today. So it would have been, it's not actionable, but if it had been, it would have only been good to 3 o'clock. So this was just to give you a snapshot, to see where the market was today for an October start.
So it's probably going to change.
Correct. If there's no significant, you know, Mark's mentioning the heat, we're going to have to see how that affects the market, right? If there's some sort of, you know, event in Europe, you know, whatever might happen globally, that all affects the market. If it doesn't, we might, you know, we might be able to get you something similar. We just have to keep, we're in the market every day, so we're going to be able to monitor that for you and we'll help pick and help you steer you towards a date.
Okay. Yeah, that was my next question is, you know, we're moving into hotter weather, which is likely to impact prices, right? So are we better off like trying to figure out pricing within, you know?
Well, so right now, we have a very well-stocked gas market right now for New England, right? We have plenty of gas in the ground. The heat is going to, so today, the price of electricity, real-time market hit 2,000, which is a very strange thing. So some base load tripped today. So, but that's not going to affect long-term, right? That's, that day, actually that hour. So I'm just saying to you, from that perspective, I think it's a good time to take a look at actionable pricing, given what I'm seeing here, what I know about national grid. Over the next two weeks, if, if the administrator has time and the board says, yeah, we'd like to, I just want to say that we come back and the price is 15, 15, might not be enough. You say, let's hold off. We don't have to do anything.
Okay. Just since you get actionable pricing, doesn't mean you're obligated to sign that day. Just that supplier is obligated to act on it should the town sign. But you can say, no, go, we're going to try it again next week.
And then these prices that you show here, when they're, when they're actionable, when we sign off on them, once we choose a term length, we are guaranteed that price for that term?
That is correct.
Okay.
Regardless of how many people stay in the program, that's going to stay there. I'm going to make this scenario up. You signed that 24-month, and I can't see what 24-month would be. It would be 13644.
Yep.
And it's a great price. Everyone stays in the program. One year from now, there is cold fusion and the price of electricity falls through the floor. And you can get basic service for six cents. Don't bank on it, but say you could. Everyone could opt out of this program and go to basic service and that, that price would still be there and would still be good until the end of the contract.
Okay. And then my last question is, can you explain some of the green options? Like, what are people getting for these options?
So these options here are local. So the top tranche is a national wind. So that, which is not the top, the top renewable, it's a national wind recs. That most likely is wind, a wind product out of Pennsylvania or Oklahoma, Texas. The wind blows all the time and these recs are readily available. The mass class ones, the rest of the tranches, the 5%, the 10%, 25, I think it's 50 and 100, those are all local renewable projects after 1997. The reason I'm going to say this is S-recs. It could be a solar rec or a wind rec, but S-recs are extremely expensive. So this is most likely wind recs in ISO New England that qualify for Massachusetts class one recs.
Okay.
Right. And you're still getting, like, you're still getting, you know, power's still coming to your house the same rate. This is a financial way to green up your electricity, right? It's not.
You buy the rec from that project in New Hampshire or Massachusetts, that's a, you know, a wind turbine, but it's the exact same electron. And I apologize. I don't know where the local, the local power plant is from here. That's where you're going to get your power today and after you sign the contract. But financially, the only way that we have to green it up is they say, if you buy this rec and support that wind, you can call yours green. And that's what they've.
Okay. All right.
It's not perfect, but it's the best they can do with electricity.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Great question.
Okay. Pretty much answered everything I was thinking about. All right. I'm going to open it up to the.
Oh, sure.
Absolutely.
Public.
So if anybody out there has any questions about the electric, the aggregate, you can ask through the chair. So we're not going to have a conversation all over the place. So Mr. Foil.
It seems like in the future, this will be your responsibility to negotiate these rates?
My understanding is this is an actual negotiation. You're going to ISO New England and buying these in the forward market. So you're taking the market rate on the day you set the price?
Yeah, it will be with the supplier, not ISO New England, but that is correct.
Okay.
It'll be the forward price. That is correct. Depending on the term you choose.
So it's more of an auction than anything is?
That is correct.
Okay.
It would be your choice. You don't have to choose the lowest price, but it would be the administrator, as long as the authority to sign was given to him, his choice would be the one that was there.
But the key here is picking a, picking a date when the market is low.
Date and time and so forth. Yes, that's correct.
And to lock in those.
That is correct. And we're going to be there. We're going to have this conversation with just you. This is what's happened. Here's what historically has gone on and so forth and so on, so that you can make an educated decision. And some days, the decision is no decision. I decided not to sign and we'll go back out in the market, two weeks, two months, whatever it is. Just gives you the ability to use the market to your ability now.
Anybody else?
This is very similar to the way towns buy, for example, fuel oil. We wait and we lock in the price when it's advantageous to us.
That's exactly, exact same thing.
Or some towns municipal, you have contracts for their municipal electric accounts, same kind of deal. Towns have been able to do it for a long time, right? They go out with all their municipal accounts and they get a better rate. I mean, it's better pricing because you can sign a five-year contract that way, not usually get a five-year contract for residential accounts, but very similar.
Very similar.
Yeah.
Ethan?
I just wondered if there's, if it would be an option to provide residents with the, with all five tranches instead of just one or two options?
So I'm not sure I understand the question. You're saying, so we have to choose a supplier with a term and then we could choose some, that product and that term, then we can choose some other green products, but we can't say each individual customer has the choice of six months or 12 months?
No, no, I didn't mean that. I meant the green options, like whether it's a 5%, 10%, 100%. It might be nice for people to have the option to do, you might have a variety of people choosing different.
I would agree. So right now, the Department of Public Utilities has given us three options and they were very prescriptive. And we had to choose, and that's why we got the order when we did. We chose that the default product would be the, and then if somebody wanted to choose something greener, they would have that ability. But it's not unlimited. I apologize for that. It's just two others. Yeah. Great question.
Anybody else?
Sure.
Go ahead.
Talking to folks other places in the country. Seems like we pay substantially more for electricity. When we talk about green options, are we talking over and above what would consider in terms of Massachusetts standard?
Yes.
Okay.
So the Massachusetts standard, first, great question, right? Massachusetts standard is 62%. You can't have less than that. And that's what this first tranche is. So what we're talking about is we would buy more on those optional products. The town has decided everyone's going to go into the meats. It's the most economical. And if somebody decided, hey, I would like to further green this up, you know, for the environment, they would be able to make a choice.
Okay, okay. Second question for you.
Yes.
Price of electricity in Massachusetts seems very tied to natural gas, which you kind of.
100%.
And you talked a couple of winters ago and, you know, I have natural gas at the house, I heat natural gas. Now, my natural gas bill didn't really go up because it was somewhat protected, but the electricity rate certainly did. So when we talk about hot months and the price of electricity going up, there's also the other side to this is they're not, as we get into winter, the more the state is locked into generating through natural gas, that price could go.
Not if, not if locked in, but the floating price is. So there's a couple of questions there. Great question. So first, 60% of our electricity here in ISO New England is made by combined cycle natural gas. The biggest issue we have here is we, as a, as a region, we've decided there is no more natural gas pipelines. So we're constrained with natural gas. So as you just pointed out, you're allowed to heat your home first with natural gas. Literally, the power plants get second fiddle. So if we get some very cold weather, you get to heat your home, they literally shut off the combined cycle natural gas plant from getting gas. They can't generate electricity. How do we backfill the system? We backfill the system with what they call LNG, liquefied natural gas. And in doing so, it's become a global market. And now, this is the spike, two winters ago, Mr. Pupkin decided he was no longer going to serve Europe with his natural gas. So they were willing to pay any price for liquefied natural gas. Unfortunately, we're not allowed to take natural gas from America and deliver it up from what I'll call the south and have it delivered here. There's a law against it. So unless the boat was made here and then manned here. So we were, we were literally fighting for that LNG with people that were being frozen out of their home. Didn't turn out to be, but we were overpaid for that natural gas, liquefied natural gas. That's what the spike was that winter.
All right. So I guess my point is, is that, that, that happy spot that when the market is advantageous.
Yes.
Is somewhere between, I would say, shoulder months? Is summer is probably not a great time? Winter's probably not a great time?
Believe it or not, in the summertime, we don't heat, no one's heating their homes right now. So there's plenty of natural gas around. That's why you normally don't see a spike, like I mentioned earlier today, because there's, there's an abundance of natural gas because nobody is using it other than for electricity.
So barring a heat wave, summer is the.
Well, the shoulder months, you know, spring, early fall, you see some pricing go up. Once you get closer to the winter though, they've already priced that in in the futures hedge. So they already know winter's coming and they price it in.
And once the, you know, the town's launching now, so waiting for four years for an order. So trying to get out to market to get the program going. But once the town signs an initial contract, we'll be in the market like all the time. So if we see a dip in the next, say, a 24-month contract is signed, if we see a dip in the market, say, six or eight months in for the first contract, we can always contact the town and say, hey, it's low right now. Like March 2020 was really low prices. We contacted all the clients. We said, lock in your next contract now, whereas the utilities are set to procure on certain dates. We have the, you know, except for on launch where we're trying to get something going and we're just looking at the next few months, we do have that ability going forward.
So we're in the game?
Yes. Yes. Full flexibility.
Great question.
Yeah.
Great question.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right. So. Two weeks?
Two things. You need to assign someone a signatory and then we need to choose some, what the products you might want to see. Just, and you don't have to choose them today.
Yeah.
As long as the administrator doesn't mind looking at them all, we can discuss them all with him on the call. If you wanted to say, hey, these are the ones we want, I'm making this up right now, I just want you to know, there's a 5% and a 50%. Those would be the only, we would have the meats, a 5% and a 50%. And then he would know, once he chose the 24-month, these were going to be the other prices.
And we're just showing that in your appetite for price with the new, additional renewable against what the national, you know, if you want one that's above what the national grid rate is, or you want to stay under on all your optionals, that's just something to think about. So with your additional percentages. So.
Thank you.
So for each, for each green thing we add, the price goes up?
Yes. Yeah, yes.
Oh, yeah?
Increment. Yeah, correct.
Okay. So we can, so obviously we can't do anything this week because the prices are going to change and you said it's not actionable.
That is correct.
So we could probably decide something in a couple of weeks?
Two weeks.
Are you looking at?
Yeah, I'm just going to just pull up the calendar. So I, so next week is the last week in June. The following week would be, not a great week. That's July 4th. I'm just assuming that's a tough week for everyone. The following week though is the week of the 8th.
July 8th?
Yeah. You know, I would say probably do a July 9th, just so that you don't come back on a Monday, you get traders coming back on the Monday.
Yeah, it would be a Tuesday.
Yep.
Yep. All right, okay.
July 9th is going to be final pricing or executable pricing, that's all.
Perfect.
Yep.
All right. Well, thank you very much.
We'll coordinate, we'll coordinate. Yeah. Perfect. Sounds good. All right.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Public comment period.
Do you do CD BG performance hearing?
Reschedule.
Oh, thank you.
I thought nobody was. Brandon, go ahead.
Public comment period.
I'd just like to welcome Mike to the team here and looking forward to seeing you at a boards and committee meetings you have the opportunity to attend.
Thank you so much.
I run the museum, so if you ever like to have a little tour of our little museum, I'd be happy to do that for you. So I'm around quite a bit, so I'm sure I'll be seeing you.
And I'll be around quite a bit too.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you so much.
Go ahead.
Also, same welcome, Mike.
Thank you.
I just wanted to say to anybody who's watching, I call, hopefully went out correctly today to recycling center users who opted in to the notification system. I don't know if anyone can confirm that it worked. I don't know if it worked.
It worked.
It worked? Okay. So anyone who wants to join, register for that list, you can get to it via the Board of Health webpage and that'll let people know about cancellations, hour changes, any additional events that are happening. Yeah.
Excellent. Thank you. Mr. Foil?
Question from the historical.
Sure.
Can you give me the status on the train station?
It's private ownership and.
It is, so we got chapped on that.
Well, the town, I believe has.
Many, many years ago.
Has a 90-day right of first refusal, but since the town doesn't have any money, I wouldn't expect anything to happen as far as that goes. But yeah, as far as I know, it's not on the market yet, but I was told it will be at some point until I know.
Sold it for way too cheap way back when.
Yeah.
So, yeah, pretty much.
Gave it away. And I wasn't involved in so.
Yeah, me either.
No, I, this is posthumously because nobody's around that did it from then.
Yep.
Right. You know, but I, from what I understood, back in my reign of terror, is that the philosophy was that when they would be done with it, it would revert back to the town. That was the, potentially the handshake agreement.
Yeah.
And obviously, nothing was in writing because it was an handshake agreement.
Yep.
I had a crying over spilt milk and it doesn't mean any different.
Yeah, I just.
I just want to say thank you to everybody, first and foremost, by everything.
You're welcome.
If you're still around, if you need anything, please call. I am still the chair of the squad on the board. So you're going to need a signature for the contract at some point when we stop down. So please reach out and I set up my connections. And thank you for following through with the building, which I know Eric's here with some information tonight for that. And can't thank you enough. That is huge. Absolutely huge for the firefighters and everybody in this town.
All right. Eric?
All right. Mike, welcome aboard.
Thank you so much.
It was a pleasure to meet you earlier the other day. You're welcome. Mr. Foil, congratulations. Mr. Foil, congratulations on your dedication, I know you've worked very hard for the town, I've worked with you on various things, and it's a pleasure working with you.
Don't say that.
I gotta do it on TV, Joe. We'll talk later. And also, I'd like to thank Joe Hallway for, you know, I had the pleasure of working with him, under him, for the fire department, and he has been instrumental in the fire department building committee, or building project, as well as the selectmen, and I want to thank you guys for helping push this forward, but Joe has put a lot of sweat and tears into keeping this project going, and I just want to personally thank you for everything you've done, and I also want to thank the selectmen for, you know, keeping this project alive and moving forward.
You're welcome.
So, what I have right now is just a quick update on the bids that came in.
Okay.
We had four people that bid, we had W.J. Mountford, they're out of Windsor, Connecticut, they had a base bid of $4,370,000. There was also three alternates that were listed. The first alternate was for mini piles to secure part of the apparatus bay in the old highway building. There was also an emergency shower set up for DPW down at the O'Hux Building, and then there was, the third alternate was to renovate the upstairs kitchen at the firehouse. Second bid was construction dynamics, they're at Clinton, Mass, their base bid was $4,839,000. The third one was City Enterprise, out of Springfield, Mass, they were $4,903,566. And then there was, the fourth one was DA Sullivan &amp; Son out of Northampton, they were So with all the alternates, as of right now, W.J. Mountford is the low bidder for the base bid. We then looked at all the alternates, and they also came in as the low bidder on including the alternates at $4,704,000. So the committee had recommended the award go to the W.J. Mountford, and right now, we have our OPM Colliers, who is now vetting that contractor, and as of right now, I got an update from the OPM that he stands by his numbers, he has a 93% DCAM rating, this project is right in the scope of his.
Sorry.
What he does, so it's not like we have somebody that builds a school bidding on a renovation project. This is what they do, this is the $4,000,000, $6,000,000 project is where they focus on doing their work. So as of right now, they just have a few more things to button up, and then they will be getting all the paperwork together, and I would like to come down on the 25th of this month to present the recommendation, and for you guys to approve it, and so then we can start moving forward with the contract negotiations with them, but they'll have all the paperwork done for you that I present, and we can stop that process.
All right.
So it's very good news that, you know, everything came within the budget, so we're looking forward to, you know, moving forward and getting some updates done in those three buildings, so I think it was a good, good process that we went through, based on the times, you know, and the market, but it is what it is, the money's there, and I think it's, the guys seem to be excited about getting that, that process going, so, and getting some good feedback from them.
I know one thing, I got feedback from other chiefs from all over, they're getting into the pricing of the new fire stations, and it is absolutely crazy, and they're asking me, how did you guys get this done for that kind of money? And I said, this is three buildings, and they can't believe it, so there are a lot of, a lot of departments starting to rethink about rehabbing versus building new with the prices of everything, so I can't thank you enough, hey, and everybody that's worked, John Tripp, everybody that helped get this thing going, it's just, it's absolutely huge.
So for, for context, right, what were we up to with the?
Oh, million, just for the fire station.
Just for the new fire station?
And that was downsized, with less than what we're going to have here, and we'll clean this whole thing right up, so we do it.
Excellent, so we'll put that on for the 25th.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Last call for public comments. All right. Is there a written announcement from?
Yes.
All right, I got it here. All right. Vaughn, you want to read that?
Sure. This comes from John Tripp, "A special thank you to Sotherland Roofing for the flowers for the little park, thank you to Robin and her mom for planting them, thank you to Algu from North Brookfield Farms for the bark mulch for the little park, thank you to Scott at Vibram for turning on the water and supplying the hose and sprinkler so we can keep the flowers alive and beautiful for the summer months, everything happened just in time for Memorial Day, thanks, John Tripp."
All right, well, thank you to all those people that donated, and thank you to John Tripp for taking care of the park. All right, I think that's everything, do you have anything else?
Can I make a brief announcement?
Sure.
Just for, just so everyone knows, due to the heat emergency, we are opening the senior center up with expanded hours to serve as a cooling station, so be aware, if you don't have air conditioning in your home, you can go to the senior center. I also want to thank Hannaford's for donating some bottled water, and with the board's acquiescence, I will send them a thank you.
Yes, great.
Did you have anything else?
That's it.
All right. I'll send a motion to adjourn.
So moved?
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody, have a good night.